Very well. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to our regular meeting. For the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal. Tonight's agenda for Wednesday, June 28th to 2023. It is 6:30 PM and we are at the room 320 of the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order. I'm going to make a roll call. My far left Oregon member, Mr. Jake Morrison. Far right, our associate member, Mr. Troy Larson. Our clerk to my right, Mr. Jim Akabachi. Myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Khlasy. Also, we have on the phone, a regular member, Mr. Richard Sample. And, okay, I'm gonna call Mr. Sample on. Okay. He can't open, so we put him on the... All right, very good. So, Richard is on the phone as well.
Whenever Mr. Sample talks, can you please put a post in?
Yes, I will. Okay, I'm gonna start with some minute, the minutes for 6:14, 2022.
Okay, Mr. Sample did a real good job of reviewing them, found a couple of things. Had Veronica correct them. I noticed one typo. They've been all corrected. They are fine as presented. I move we accept as presented.
Do I have a second on the minutes?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. Jake?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Okay, just arrived, Mrs. Vanke de Beniz, our regular member, and it's 6:33 PM. All right, very good. We go to public hearing, 22-23, Town Fair Tyres, 2991 Cranberry Highway.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 28th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, 02571. To consider petition number 22-23 for a site plan review and special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Section 320, and Article 15, Section 1520, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Town Fair Tire, care of John Wipowski of 460 Cozav, East Haven, Connecticut, proposing a tenant fit out for Town Fair Tire Shop located at 2991 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 15 lot C in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
Very well. Name and address for the record?
I saw your name.
My name's Jeff Hassett. I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering. I'm here with John Wipowski of Town Fair Tire.
Sorry.
So, the reason we're here this evening is Town Fair Tire has a lease to move into a vacant unit at Cranberry Plaza, which is a 20-acre large shopping center on Cranberry Highway. Specifically, they're looking to move into Unit I, which was formerly Olympia Sports. And we're here seeking a site plan review and a special permit for the use. The property is owned Commercial Strip Zoning. And the uses are retail, which would be selling of the tires, which is an allowed use by right. And then also motor vehicle service, which would be the actual installation of the tires on the cars, which is allowed by special permit. So, the work that they are proposing to the building is to improve the front facade with a new gable and a wall sign, as well as interior renovations, making the front portion of the building an area for sales, pick out the tires in a waiting room. And then around back, the vehicles would be pulled around back by an employee where the tires would actually be installed on the car. The only modifications to the site work are in the rear of the building. And they include putting in a grease trap for the floor drains and then also an enclosure for tires and a dumpster, which is, again, behind the building. There is more than adequate parking, existing parking on the property. There's a vast parking lot in the front. In the times that I've been there, there's been more than enough parking, plenty of empty spaces. And there's also quite a bit of parking behind the building for employees. So, we don't feel that this project will have any adverse impact on town services or the welfare of the community in that the demands that Town Fair Tire will have on police, fire, and schools are very similar to the previous tenant and very minimal as well. We did receive a peer review letter today. And they note that there were no major deficiencies to the application. And they did have three comments, so I'll run through those. One is a letter from the architect documenting compliance with Section 764, which is the architecture of the building. I would ask that that could be reviewed by the building inspector as a condition. Secondly, a signed permit will be required, which is a permit application with the building department as well, which we have noted. And then third, the third comment had to do with the dumpster area. This location is really the only area where the dumpster and the tire cage work, where it wouldn't interfere with deliveries to the other units or easements or just ways behind the building, without getting too far away from this unit. So, we would like to keep it in that location. But we stopped by the property today. And we can put the gates to the dumpster on the opposite side, where there's more than enough room for the concern. Is there enough room there for a truck to get in and pick up the dumpster? So, I would ask that we, as a condition, submit a revised plan showing the gate on the other side of that dumpster. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I'm sorry, what did you say? A second?
The second is a signed permit will be required from the building department. That has more detail in sign, color, size, material.
All right. Did it go to peer review? So, you get a letter from, you said, from our consultant?
Yeah, he sent an email today. Did you see it? I read it.
So, what did he say?
He said, "You don't need me on this one. It's over at the plaza."
Okay.
That's the Reader's Digest version. He also said that he didn't like the access to the dumpster, which you've already addressed. He also said that you will need a signed permit, which you've already addressed. So, unless the commissioner has something that...
Right, we'll listen to the commissioner. Do you have any comment? Nothing on that. All right, well, Troy, what do you think?
I don't have any questions.
Veronica?
No questions yet.
Jake?
No questions.
Jimmy?
All set.
Richard, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm all set. I heard. What did he say?
All right. Anyone in public in favor against this project? I think nice and easy. I guess the fire department, they're fine with it. We have a letter from them. Anything else?
Health department too, says it's okay.
The fire department?
The health department.
The board of health though?
Yeah, they said it was okay.
Oh, okay. You need the board of health?
Yeah, in case somebody want to put milk on them tires and eat them like Cheerios, you know?
What was the note about the exterior that you had?
The review consultant was recommended a letter documenting compliance with Section 764, which is basically, had to do with aesthetics of the building.
Oh, okay.
One second.
It's an existing building.
What's that letter?
Site plan review, I mean, it's a, it's a sharpened plaza. We're not gonna go in and check the drainage and the lighting and all that jazz.
It's already been...
There's, I just, I think it's kind of a rubber stamp. Yeah, he needs to come in here and get a special permit. It makes Town Fair Tire feel special. You got a special permit.
All right.
I make a motion, we close the public portion of this hearing.
Do you want to comment before we close? You good?
I'm all set.
Okay, I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All right, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
But Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Closed.
I further make a motion that we approve the plans as presented as long as the applicant understands that their sign has to be done via permit through the building commissioner.
Any discussion on that? Here none. Do I have a second on that?
Standing conditions.
Second by Jake. Okay, so all in favor, say aye. Jake?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye.
One, two, three.
I'm also put the finding not substantially detrimental.
I'm gonna put 600 because anybody...
No, 500.
Five, so, okay.
500. All right, very, very good. Good to go.
I get it wrong.
Easy.
Yeah.
That was the easiest hearing.
Good luck over there.
All right, 23-23, Kim and Mark Aaron for 84 Pinehurst Drive. Pass these papers back. You, there you go, Jimmy.
Thank you.
That's two for me.
There you go.
You got the next two, huh? Good man. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 8th, June 28th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, 02571. To consider petition 23-23 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 628, and Article 13, Section 1352, and Section 1353 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Kim and Mark Aaron, care of William Lockwood of Lockwood Architects of Lonsit, Mass, proposing a 6-foot by 20.2-foot second-floor addition on a 6-foot by 20.2-foot second-floor deck located at 84 Pinehurst Drive. That's in Wareham. It appears on assessors map 46-A/1 lot D in the MR30 zoning district.
All right, very well. Name another sir.
Good evening. Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, representing the Arons. I'd like to first correct the recitation to reflect the fact that the deck, that the structure is 16 feet, but not 6 feet.
So, the 6 should be, 16?
There is a 6-foot deck in addition to the 16-foot structure. So...
So, it's 6-foot, one way, where's the 16 come in?
If you have...
I got 6 by 20 feet.
Yeah, that's the deck. And then there's the addition as well.
Addition adjacent to that deck is the bedroom, which the deck is attached to.
And that'll be 16 by 20?
Right.
So, the public announcement proposing a 6-foot... So, what are you building, 6 by 20 or 16 by 20?
22 by 20, basically. But 6 feet of it is a deck.
Okay. So, I'm gonna take the 6 and change it to 22. Okay.
22.3, right?
22.3, yes. Just rounding the numbers.
So, you put an addition, 22.3, 6 foot over as a porch?
On the second floor of an existing...
On the second floor entirely over the existing structure. It is closer, it is being built within the setback of 10 feet. But we are further away on the portion of the structure where we are than the closest point. So, where it's 4.2 feet at the narrowest point, at our narrowest point of our addition is 6.5 feet. Again, it's over the existing structure. The real issue is there's a little bit of an increase in the, there's an increase in the FAR from about 24% and change to about 32% in change, which puts it over the 30% FAR limit. If it were constructed as a dormer, if the roof were high enough to construct it as a dormer, we would have been allowed to construct 400 square feet by de minimis. I can't say that very well. And we are proposing something less than that, 300 and some odd square feet. It's a fairly minor piece of business, we consider, and would look for a favorable decision from the board. In your packet, you have the site plan on one end and the architectural, proposed architectural plan on the other end, as well as some supporting information. Any questions? Be happy to answer them.
All right, on the, on the setback, it's an existing nonconforming, so you can, if the board feel not substantially detrimental, we could act upon it as a special permit. And you can increase your nonconformity. However, the FAR, that's a variance because you're not nonconforming. So, that 2% needs a variance.
Understood.
If the board feel so, that you have a hardship for it. What did you say if it was to be a dormer?
Under the de minimis statute, it allows 400 square feet as a dormer by right. We are 300 and some odd square feet, which would be less than that. However, since we are going above the...
What statute is that? I never heard of that, the 400.
Is it 1314? 1360?
It's part of the bylaw. It's not a code or...
It's in the zoning code.
Zoning, it's zoning.
What's 400 allowed by, if it's a dorm, if you build a dormer?
I think...
Yeah, grab your thing. Take your time.
It's 1390.
And what does it say?
Number, 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 1392. In accordance...
Let's ask the commissioner. Could you mind, Paul, explain this to us?
Yes, my fault.
Yeah, oh, okay. You want to come forward?
Yes, sure.
Please.
1392.
All right, Commissioner Turner. Would just be, I'm just interested to know that bylaw.
Mm-hmm. It'd be 1392, item 1.
1392, I'm gonna look at it.
I know it doesn't apply here, but I'd like to know what it is.
Yeah, you always willing to learn.
Okay, dorm is that or not?
1392, is there a number particular or...
Just your name and address for the record.
Paul Turner, building commissioner. Mr. Lockwood is speaking of Section 1392. In accordance with the aforementioned provisions, the following de minimis alterations are allowed. Note number one. Dormers that do not extend above the height of the existing roof peak and do not add more than 400 square feet of area.
That's, that...
So...
Hold on. So, 1391 before that.
Yeah.
Regardless whether there are increases in the nonconforming nature of a structure, the following alterations, enlargements, extensions, or structural changes to lawfully existing single or two-family residential structures may be allowed in accordance with the procedures set forth below, provided that...
Relief is, thank you, Sid.
Yeah, I guess I could read the whole thing in if you like. Note number one. Relief is limited solely to that portion of the building or structure which is presently dimensionally nonconforming. Note number two. The resulting changes of the nonconforming side will be no closer than 5 feet from the side or rear property line. Number three. The resulting distance to the nearest residence at the side where the proposed construction will take place is equal to or greater than the sum of the required setbacks of the adjacent lots. And I already read in number, no, I didn't. And number four. The resulting construction will meet all building, fire, safety, conservation, and health requirements for said zoning district.
So, if he's adding 400 square feet and does not, less, if it's not, if it's over 5 feet from the setback and does not over be above the roof peak, why in this one?
I could use that section and grant him a permit by right.
This, which section, 1391?
1390. 91, yes.
Yep, 92.1.
And 92.1.
The building...
So, really, the only thing we're here to make a decision on is FAR?
Correct.
Well, no.
The special permit on the...
If he's allowed the 400 square feet, are you adding...
But you're increasing the roof.
His addition is taller than the existing roof line.
But let them know, yeah.
I am above the ridge line, so that's why...
You're doing above 400.
He's above the ridge line, so, right.
Yeah, and you're going above the ridge.
Correct.
And you are over 400 square feet. 20.2 by 20, 22.3, that's more than 400.
Well, it's not of living space, however.
Oh, the deck is like a porch?
Yes, it's a deck, yeah.
All right, okay, let's start. What do you think, Troy?
I don't have a problem with it.
Veronica?
I don't have a problem with it.
Jake?
No problem with this at all.
Richard, you heard that?
Yeah, there won't be any closing in of that porch or that deck up above, right?
No, that's an overhanging porch.
Okay, so that they won't be able to close it in, right?
It overhangs, right?
It's an open, open deck.
Open, it's not...
It's open under and above.
Well, not under, because there's a house underneath it.
Okay, it's, all right, so he's, that's what Richard's saying. Are you eventually gonna... So, Richard, you want to kind of do like a condition not to be closed then without a permit from zoning?
Yes, Commissioner, that's what I'd like.
All right. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking. I don't think we have any objection to that.
In the future, if you want to close it, you want to need another permit.
We'll have to come see you again.
What do you think? All right.
I understand Richard's condition. I looked on the zoning mats. I mean, these things are shoehorned in there like, eeh-ha. You couldn't get a bigger house on a smaller lot if you tried?
No, you couldn't.
You could probably get it bigger by going up, but...
Yeah, that'd be the only direction you could move.
I mean, it's only 30 feet wide at the street, it's that, and it's...
Yeah, I don't think it is.
They're in there, but that's no matter. My point is, I don't see a room full of neighbors saying, "No, no, no."
Well, we didn't ask. Does anyone in the public want to speak in favor against?
Yeah, I have some questions.
All right, want to come forward?
Sure, if you want me to sit over here?
Yes, you have to, for the, that's the rules.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
It's your, it's your moment, it's your moment in fame.
My moment in fame, wonderful. I'm Dr. Tim Smith. I live at 83 Pinehurst Drive, across the street.
Okay.
Mark and Kim are my neighbors. How high will this go?
Mr. Lockwood?
28 feet.
28.
Above the current height or to a total?
Total.
Total.
Okay. So, does the board consider what happens to other people's view when you make your decisions?
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily?
Unless you have such thing on your deed, grant you...
If you have a view easement, then we'd absolutely be interested, you know?
Yes, I understand, okay, all right. Does the board agree, then, that having a water view increases your personal property value for selling?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So, I have seven windows that currently look over that roof line. That will eliminate that view over that roof from my house. And up to 50% of my total water view from those seven windows.
I understand. However, you don't own the house on the water either.
No.
That's the thing.
No, no. But when we, when we bought over 10 years ago, if I can give you a brief example, I was gonna put a shed in my backyard. And I went to the town and I asked, "Can I put a shed in the town?" You know, on my property. And they said, "Bark it, we'll be down." So, I marked where I wanted it. They said, "No, you cannot do that there because it would block the view from somebody on the other side of woodland on the street behind us." But they said, "You could put it here." So, I put it there. So, I complied. Because I didn't want to block somebody else's view who wasn't a deeded view. And what I'm saying is that this will increase that property value but decrease mine because my roof will be reduced.
You're correct. But like I said, unless you have something in your deed, it doesn't mean that the board gonna grant it for him, just letting you know. And keep in mind, if you aggrieved with the permit, you could always appeal it within 20 days if we give a decision tonight. So, you get 20 days to appeal it.
Yeah.
And you could appeal it to court and to district court or superior court and plead your case and see what the judge think.
I understand.
And I think it's important to note, too, that he's 2% over. So, he could still build up without really our approval from us for any kind of a variance and still be blocking your view, but it would just be a little tiny bit smaller.
Understood, okay. But I have seen where a house does a 50% renovation or, you know, 50% of the value, they get reevaluated, then they build up again, and then they do it again, and then they do it again. And also in our neighborhood, there was, I guess, a foundation for a garage. And now there's a two-story structure there. There's a garage and a room above it. And it completely blocks up...
And that property?
No, 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 I'm just saying, in the neighborhood.
Oh, we don't, we're not aware.
So, what I'm afraid of is, yes, losing all of my view at some point.
I mean, fortunately, they could go up to, what is it, 34 feet?
35.
They could go to 35, so they're going a little bit lower than what they could, so...
That could go to 35 feet?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, then it would just block the sun.
Unfortunately, I live in a house like you, and I'm the second one behind. And people did build up in front of me, so I understand. But it was tough pill to swallow, but I had to.
Then again, it is special permit, and there's a variance. Like I said, if you aggrieved and you want to appeal it, we just like...
Yeah, I mean, Mark and Kim are great neighbors.
I understand, but we don't like, we don't like the burden on the town to appeal such thing or to deny and have the owner. So, we'd like, I mean, if, the town wouldn't be aggrieved with this decision if we say yes. So, if you aggrieved with it, you're gonna have to appeal it.
Right, I, yeah, that I understand, yep.
You seem to be gentlemen, and you're like the neighbors. But if he wants, I don't know what to say. I totally understand you're gonna lose your view.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, I think, I think, too, considering what he could do by right, the 2% difference, it's really not that much, which is one of the reasons why I know for myself, I don't think it's, I'm not opposed to it. I don't think it's detrimental because it's by right.
Yes.
To practically do the same thing, not exactly, but very close. And then the other thing to your comment about building and stopping, I think that's like when you're in a flood zone, you can only improve so much. And then you have to stop and reapply.
They're only about 10 feet from the water and in a flood plain.
Yeah, but you're not in velocity, so you don't need to be in, on stilts. This is best part you probably mean.
Well, I was just notified.
I believe the living, what's the elevation bill on that living floor? The first, the bottom of the door?
First floor is about 12.6, is 12.6. We are in the, which flood zone are we?
AE16.
AE16, so...
This is a call for the building commissioner, that's a building... This is a call for the building commissioner, that's a building code issue, that's not ours. Commissioner, doesn't over 50 has to go above 16 in this matter? If it's 50% more, what's the, what's a house assessed for, not the land?
The house is assessed.
The deed, I think, oh, assessed.
The house.
Yeah. On a tax. A second, I think I have that information in here.
Right.
Yes.
And how much you think the, the addition will cost?
Right.
380 something.
Before you look at the assessment, how much you think the addition will cost? What's that, what's, what's, you got an estimate?
80,000, I think.
How many square feet?
2300.
300 square feet? Total? All what you add in 300?
300 and short change.
Okay.
Uh, the improvement, uh, we would have theoretically 100,000 to spend.
Is the porch, the porch is not covered, right, that you're putting on upstairs?
Correct.
What do you think?
So substantial improvement in a flood zone, if you spend less than 50% of the value of the structure, you're allowed to do it. Add that to your property, close out the permit, and you can keep doing that.
Is there?
Value of the, of the structure is 200,000, these $100,000 budget, Mr. Lockwood said he was gonna spend 80,000, so it would be.
How much the value for the house?
200, does not include the land.
Uh, it says 200?
It's worth 233.
233.
Structure.
He could spend $100,000 and not need to go on stilts. If he spent $101,000, the whole house would have to go on stilts.
Would have to be brought up to current fee regulations.
Wouldn't have to go on stilts, but it'd have to come up.
Yeah, it would have to come up, right. Uh, wow, 200, that's, that's a lot.
That's 233.
That's a lot of money.
This is the improvement.
Okay.
Hold on to it.
All I have to say is, I would hope that you would consider that by someone else improving their, their view, you're destroying somebody else's view. And I, I get it, I understand.
We do consider the sales price.
I understand.
And we do, and I totally understand. So one person is not gonna be happy, either you or him, and like I said.
Well, they bought the house as it was.
What's that?
They bought the house as it was.
I understand.
Someone must have been happy to buy it.
Excuse me, but as did you.
Yes, yes.
As did you.
Yeah.
And when you bought your house, you didn't buy any rights of you, and you didn't buy any.
Correct.
Of his rights.
Correct.
And he has a right to build a 35 feet in height. If he wanted to spend 101,000, he could jack the existing house right up, he could go up, he could completely block you. I understand your position, I surely do, but I, I looked at either house on either side of it, which is already higher than this, this house in the middle. I get it that this is the last little, little guy in there that you can peek over, and he's gonna do something, and I understand your fear, your fear is, after, a year from now, after this $80,000 addition is done, he comes back and asks, now his $200,000 house is worth 280,000, and he can spend.
Half that.
Another 140 grand.
Correct.
Yep.
And.
Yep.
Welcome to America.
Yep.
What he would also?
You know, I don't mean that in a, I don't.
No, no, I understand.
I understand your position perfectly, um, I have some empathy for you, but, um, I also feel as though, I, I don't see it being a detriment, personally, I don't see it a detriment to the neighborhood, what he's doing.
Just to me. And anybody else, just for you.
Yeah, you're a neighbor, not the neighborhood.
There are other people whose view will be affected. I'm not the only one. Okay, but, but thank you for the consideration.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, thank you for your calm demeanor.
So, do you wanna speak?
Um, I would just.
You just gotta come to the mic if you wanna speak. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, Richard.
Hey, you have a full board, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go let the board continue the rest of the meeting as, as what it is.
All right, very good, thank you, Richard.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, for the record, Mr. Sample.
A while ago.
Left the board at 7:06. Mr. Larson will be speaking.
On my house, too.
Will be voting for his chair. All right, so name and address?
Bill Manguso, 70 Pinehurst Drive.
All right, what's your question?
I was just listening to the numbers, first of all, I have a question about the right to build. Wasn't the right to build in the conversation earlier about it being a dormer?
Well, it's, it's considered, like, considered dormer, any of it.
Well, it's a second story. You have to take the roof completely off to do it because the current roof is not, the ridge line is not high enough for it to be a dormer, so I'm wondering how those rules apply as being a right to build. And anything, uh, from a conservation standpoint, I know you're not conservation, but.
Right.
You're so close to the water.
Yeah, that's, that's irrelevant to us.
When the word, when the word right, the word right was in reference to the amount of height, in the, in that particular zoning district.
Okay.
You have a limit on how high you can go from grade. So the word, when the word right was used, they said, he could go to 35 feet by right. That's the way the word right was used. He doesn't have a right to do, you, you follow what I'm saying? By, it was part of the conversation. So he can go up, the zoning bylaw allows him to build his house, and you and everybody else in the neighborhood can build to a maximum height of 35 feet.
I thought.
And it does look like a dormer, you know, it is a dormer, kinda. You know what I'm saying?
Well, my, I thought a dormer was.
Like a doghouse?
Like you cut a piece of the roof out and you come off the same.
You could do the whole side as a dormer.
Right, that's like a shed dormer.
You're keeping your ridge line.
That's like a shed dormer.
I don't know if that's, whatever technically a dormer is, but, uh, it sounded like a dormer was, you're basically keeping a ridge line. And you're either going up or putting a doghouse dormers.
Right.
And I thought the, you were, you were mentioning the right to build as in reference to it being, well, a dormer, with a dormer, you have the right to build, I think that's what this gentleman was saying, but this isn't a dormer.
No, it doesn't apply.
No, it, it was offered by way of comparison.
Okay.
Uh?
It was offered by way of comparison.
Ah, okay.
And my, my only other statement would be, um, we're, we're now gonna be in a canyon, you know, we're basically, I'm not on the water, I've got a.
Yeah.
Got my own little view, but, um, you know, the neighborhood is just changing so rapidly.
Yeah, the whole town is, well, that's.
No, I understand that.
That's how it is.
For the good generally.
The whole country.
That's what I have to say.
Yeah, thank you.
So, just, just, as I said earlier, just for point of clarification, as this guy goes up, if you're across the street or the gentleman that spoke before you are across the street, they have the right to build up to 35 feet, so they could go up and then look over the house again. It's gonna get to a point where, you know, somebody, it's gonna get there and it's gonna stop, but, um.
No, I understand, I.
But your argument about the dormer, I think you're right. Your dormer argument is right. I, I thought about it, you're right.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I'm just.
But he used that as an example, you know?
And that, and that and the 50%, you know, what, what is the actual building assessed for?
Uh, 200,000 and change.
That's a lot, but I guess it is what it is.
So if you spend 100,000, so you, you're saying it was 320 square feet that you're building?
Roughly, yeah.
Approximately, yes.
Is that including the deck?
With the deck.
With the deck?
No, no, hold on, it's about 430 with the deck.
Not including the deck.
Without the deck is.
So what's the construction price for that?
Well, right now, at least 200 square feet.
So.
Or say 250. He said 80,000, right? So what's 250?
There's a little bit of room to grow.
Is this the current valuation that we have?
Do you have it?
Yeah, it says 1, it says 160, I don't know if that's current, it says 160 for the property, uh, for the land's 233, 160 for the house.
Land 233, improvements 160, 500, if this is, if this is correct, if we've all got it, could I?
Yeah, the, the, the house is 160.
Show me.
The, the house is 160, 500.
Oh, I, I showed you.
You, you gave us the, you gave us the land instead of the house.
Did I? Or did I give you?
The house is 160, the land is the 200 or 230 or whatever.
I, I think, um, I may, I may have inserted a, a more, not the latest version of that.
Yeah, there's no date on this, I don't.
Does it do assess?
Yeah, I don't see a date.
Let me open and find out.
Let me find this.
But you still even.
Oh, I, I apologize, it does say 160, yeah, where did I get the 200?
Even still, you're still 80, 80,000 is still half of 160.
Well, that's the 200, $200 a square foot, and.
I, I know I did, and I showed it to you.
Yeah.
Somebody just said $250 a square foot, so what is, in other words, I, I.
Well, we don't just make up numbers, we're just using numbers to try to be, to try to address your question.
You could do a, you could do per square feet, like a spec. $200 easy, easy, like an addition like this, because you're not putting a foundation, no excavation, no tying it down, and you could really do it fancy for 500,000 if you wanna go fancy. But if you are to do it, to be honest, I'm a builder.
I have a later addition here.
Hold on, let me speak, please.
I'm sorry.
All right? So if, I'm a builder, like I said, and if you are to do it, like basic, you could easily do it for 60, 70,000, to be honest with you, and like I said, you could spend 400, 500,000 if you wanna go fancy.
Okay.
But it's, it's a good argument, if you, if you agree with the decision, like I said, and you could appeal it, maybe you could argue it in court if it's approved. Yes, Mr. Lockwood, what were you saying? What were you, what were you saying?
There's a $40,000 difference between the 22, um, 2022, uh, version and the 2023 version.
Oh, there's an, another 40, yeah.
Yeah, that, which is the 160 to 200 difference.
This field card is the old field card, you got a new, a newer one.
I have a newer one in my possession, I have both of them in my possession, actually, yeah.
And so what's the newer one get the house?
Like 200?
200,000.
Yeah, 200,000.
You could easily build it with 60, 70, to, to be honest and fair.
So I, I think it begs the question, does, is it worth looking, revisiting the plans to avoid any potential arbitration? This is a question for you, Mr. Lockwood, um.
There's a, there's a big difference, it is, it's 200,000, so the 100 grand.
No, no, I'm not talking about, talk about the variance, the FAR.
I think what she's asking is, is it worth us getting rid of 2%, uh, which, um, I think, if my math is, best skills are still intact, is something like 95 square feet. Um, it's, it's a small bedroom, it's not an expansive bedroom as it is, um, and I think if we're.
No, 2% is 10 square feet, it's not 95, it's not.
Well, it's, no, it's 2% of 4,000 square feet, so, um.
No.
Of the lot size, right, what are we going after?
Uh, it's a percentage of lot size.
No, FAR.
The FAR is a percentage.
Floor area ratio, the floor area ratio to the lot area.
Yeah, what's the floor area total?
So we're talking about 2% of 4,300 square feet.
It's that big, 4,000 square feet?
Lot? 43.
No, the floor area ratio is the building, not the lot.
No.
What is it?
The floor area is.
What we're talking about, because we vote on it. So when you say floor area ratio, you're talking about the ratio of the floor area to the plot of land.
Right.
If, if you've got an acre of land, you want the ratio of building to land to be a certain percentage.
And I'm talking about the building size, not the lot size. He said it's 4,000.
The building size, yes, we want the ratio of the building in comparison to the size of the lot.
How big is the building, that's my question, not how big is the land? If I, I know, but it's 4,000 square feet, the lot.
The lot's okay.
How big is the building, is my question.
How big is the building?
It says 1,076.
I'm sorry, the.
One other time, please, it's going out of hand, one other time.
Uh, to answer, to try to answer the question, the building right now is 1,078 square feet. We were proposing to increase, to increase to 1,407 square feet. If we were to remove the 2.2%, that would be about 90-ish square feet.
You're right.
Uh, which, um, divided by 20, um, is about five square, uh, five feet, takes about a third of the bedroom away. And since there's a stairway that represents another significant portion of that space, um, it, it, it almost makes it non-workable.
Okay. So, while everybody's pondering it, I have a tendency to feel as though the request in front of us is not unreasonable, and if people in the neighborhood were aggrieved, if we were to decide in favor of this application, if people in the neighborhood were aggrieved by our decision, they could certainly get it to stop by filing an appeal.
If we, uh, I'm sorry, sorry.
You know, and, and then, you know, it's a matter of, you know, and I don't mean to be flippant here, but it's, what's that view worth to that neighbor? If he's, if it's worth it to him to hire an attorney and appeal our decision, he may, he may place great value, and that's, um, his absolute right.
Right. However.
If we.
If we are to grant a variance and you show a hardship, you know if you get appealed, you're gonna lose, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, what?[1649.29]
If we are to grant a hardship, I mean a variance, and your hardship is weak. And the neighbors appeal you, you're gonna lose that permit. You're gonna lose in court, to be honest with you.
Understood.
I mean, you argue your hardship, it is unique, that's for sure. We don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood. It does not derogate from the intention of the bylaw, that's for sure. That's the third test, the fourth test is the hardship. So why don't we go over the hardship one more time? For the board. So why you think, what's the hardship to grant you that extra 100, 90 square feet or whatever it is?
90.
90.
Well, the shape of a lot is non-traditional and that is not rectangular. The topography puts it in the flood zone, which is another factor. And it. It's difficult to, it's a hardship to try to do anything with the property differently.
But being in a flood zone, it's not a hardship.
No, it's a factor, but it's a factor of topography.
Topography of the lot is great, it's nice and flat. So the topography is fine, the size, the shape of the lot is a perfect rectangle shape, so you're not stuck for setbacks. You know, you're not asking for a setback, that you're stuck with the shape of the lot. You have uniqueness, that's for sure. But what's the hardship to grant you another 90 square feet? I don't, it's not the shape of the topography or the type of soil in there.
The hardship.
I mean, I could pass it to the board and see what they think of that. What do you think, Troy?
I. I don't really have any.
What's that?
I don't really have anything.
You don't have anything, Veronica?
I think a hardship is a stretch.
Jimmy?
I continue to contend that, you know, the 2% is not a hardship. It's not a detriment to the neighborhood, so. I'm curious if I can go backwards here a little bit. There was a gentleman that spoke earlier and then sat back down. Do you mind if I ask across the room, are you on Woodland Circle, sir?
I'm on Pinehurst Drive.
You're on Pinehurst Drive. Is your backyard house on Woodland Circle?
Yes.
I'm trying, I'm looking at an aerial photo here, I'm trying to figure out which house.
I could, if I may approach.
Yeah, if you would, if it would help me.
Grab a chair to the mic, your name again for the record. Now, stay, the gentleman next to you can stay, to grab this chair.
Yeah, I got someone up.
Stay, you could stay right there.
This is the house in question, I believe.
That's my house.
And this is yours here, okay.
And Woodland is back here.
Yeah, yeah, now is your backyard on Woodland or?
Yes, that's my fence, that's on Woodland.
That's it, so you got a little touch on Woodland here.
Yep. And I was told I couldn't put my shed here because the people back here could see down through here. So I have to put my shed there.
If you're gonna talk a lot, you have to sit for, it has to be on the record.
Go sit on the microphone.
Please, if you don't mind. State your name again and address.
Dr. Timothy Smith, 83 Pinehurst Drive.
All right.
Irrespective to this application, I'd say that you were probably told by a prior board, no.
Put the shed?
About the shed, it's got nothing to do with this case.
Oh, that was over 10, that was over 10 years ago.
Yeah, well, maybe the shed, you know, maybe 10 years later, you still like to have the shed where you'd like to have it. If you want, you know, if you're aggrieved by the location of your shed, I'd suggest. You file an appeal with the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Maybe I'll build a garage instead.
They seem to be a pretty good group of people and looking to try to help people out. But I'm looking here and I'm looking at your house and how it squares and I get. I'm sure, I'm sure if he builds, but I'm looking at the other two houses here and. Man, I mean, they're shoehorned in there, it's.
All right, let's stick to the subject.
Yeah, okay.
Sir, no, we're not gonna discuss your house, just have a seat, we're not gonna discuss your house anymore. You can stay here if you want to comment, sir. If you want to say, but we're not gonna talk about your house anymore. So Jake, what do you think of the hardship?
I don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right. But, okay. I personally am not comfortable granting a variance. Personally, I don't know the rest. One more person is not comfortable, it's lost. So either, you want to take a poll, see how the board feel?
If we could take a sense of the board, we think we would be willing to bring it, go take it back to the drawing board if necessary.
I don't feel that it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, Veronica, what do you think about the variance?
I don't see the hardship.
She don't see the hardship, Jimmy?
I'd give them the variance.
Oh, that's gone.
Jake?
I would as well.
Sir, sir, when it gets like a little bit touchy, you have to be straight to the microphone. Everything has to be in record, just in case you appeal, so you have a case. So we gotta, we gotta say everything on record, okay? So no chit-chat, you're not allowed to chit-chat, we're gonna keep it straight. I don't think, I'm not comfortable with the hardship, so that's two people know, so.
So that sounds like, that sounds like we'd like to ask for a continuance.
And downsize it, take 190 square feet, whatever it is.
Or take a different. There's a different approach we can take and may take.
Yeah, see different approach.
And if I can get the contact information from these gentlemen.
Sure, absolutely, once you guys leave, you could take the contact outside.
Negotiate with them in a different forum.
So you're seeking a continuance?
Yes, please.
I make so move.
Okay, we have a motion to continue this until. Are you good for July 12?
Uh, July 12?
Or 26, which one you want?
12th is fine.
Okay.
7/12/2023.
23-20.
And before we vote, I'd like to comment that it would probably behoove each of us to take a ride through. Take a look at the conditions.
We will.
Try to make believe we're the neighbor that's gonna be looking at this dormer roof.
Gentlemen, you will not be notified again to come to the hearing, so if you wish to attend again, you just gotta come on your own. Okay? So we have a motion by Jim to continue this public hearing until July 12, do I have a second on that?
Second down.
Second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye, Jake?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. So you could chit chat outside, take numbers, and I don't know, come up with different idea, maybe just to stick with special permit. Thank you very much.
We're good.
Can we guys have back this folder for Jimmy? Okay, Jimmy, this is Jake.
This part of the public hearing is closed?
Close, it's not closed, it's still open, but it's continued.
We're done for tonight.
Your hearing is not done for tonight, we're not done, we have other things. But you guys, you're free to go if you wish. You could attend or you could stay and watch something else. 24-23, Tina DeAngelis.
Have to stay.
A special permit slash variance, 21 Bayberry Road.
Just to let you know, I have to leave by 8.
You have to do what?
Leave by 8.
7:30, this is an easy one.
Yeah, I think we should be done.
Gentlemen, wanna take it outside, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Have I got all the folders from this last one back?
Yes, you did.
Do now. Because they look so much like the next one, it would be easy to misfile them. See how it's the same architect who's got the next one.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
The second one yours, Bill?
Uh, it is.
Bayberry, okay. Just hang on.
All right, Jake. Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing on June 28, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 24-23 for a special permit and/or variance. From the requirements of Article 6, Table 620. Article 13, Section 1352 and Section 1353. Under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Tina DeAngelis, heir of William Lockwood, Lockwood Architects of Onset, Mass. Proposing to construct a 12-foot by 12-foot gazebo. Attaching it to an existing covered porch along the front of an existing dwelling located at 21 Bayberry Road, Wayham, Mass. Which appears on Assessors Map 28. Lots 47 and 48 in the R60 zoning district.
Very well. Close yours, Mr. Lockwood?
Yes, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, representing Tina DeAngelis.
Okay.
DeAngelis. As stated in the opening, we're constructing a small, wishing to construct a small gazebo porch. Attached to the existing porch, the existing porch right now is on the non-water side of the structure. And they would like to have this pushed out so that they can look beyond their existing structure. Towards the water view. It's previously stated 12 by 12. Picture of the proposed addition is in our drawing in the rear of the structure. Site plan is in the, is in the front pocket. As you can see on the site plan, the existing setback for the building is 2.8 feet from the property line. Our closest setback for this addition is 21.7 feet. Within the setback in the R60 zone, but further away than the current. It's a fairly unusual shaped lot because the Bayberry Road impinges quite a ways into it. And happy to answer any further questions you might have about it.
How big the house, how many square feet is the house?
How many square feet is the house? 1,800 perhaps, I'm only, I'm, so that's not an actual number, it's an estimate.
All right, okay, let me see, so with the commission.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So I'm sorry, I was listening to you and looking. You're within setbacks?
Uh, yeah, we're, yes.
So what is it you need from us?
I believe, I believe what we need is a special permit to construct in the setback.
He's in the R60, what's a setback in R60?
Oh, it's 60, that's what, it's the 70 feet. It's the setback, okay, okay, R60.
Yeah.
However, he's an existing non-conforming.
It is an existing non-conforming.
If the board feel so under 1353. If the board feel is not substantially more detrimental, we could act upon it as a very, as a special permit.
Yes.
I got it now, we're having a hard time.
The setback in the front 60 and he has 21.7. Okay, very well. Again, Mr. Larson will be sitting on Mr. Sample's chair, so Troy, what do you think?
Um, I don't find it detrimental.
Veronica?
I don't have a problem with it.
Jimmy?
I'm ready to grant relief.
Jake?
I, this one's okay.
Yeah, and I myself also believe it's not so detrimental, so we'll act upon it as a special permit. Anything you want to add, Mr. Lockwood, before we close?
Thank you.
Okay.
Does the commissioner have anything to say? Anything from the public?
Anything from the public for against this project, anybody in there?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Anything, Kenny?
No, no one.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Akwachi to close, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, it's closed. How does the board feel, is it detrimental or substantial?
Non-detrimental to the neighborhood act as a special permit.
Okay, very well, by Jim, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye, Jake?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. Now as a special permit, what's the wishes?
Grant relief, standard conditions.
And the finding not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. So carries, thank you.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Very well, before we go, before we leave. Commissioner, can you stay for a second?
Yeah, no problem.
Do you, I just want, just the board feeling, do you feel that Mr. Turner attending the hearing useful? And you like it?
Yeah.
You support this? Like, do you feel Mr. Turner, the commissioner being here is helpful? Would you like to see him again, like in hearings, would you like, I mean, we should send a recommendation, selectmen, if they allow him to stay all the time here, whatever they have to make a deal.
Might have an impact on his schedule at work or his hours.
I know, we just want to say, I just want to hear it from you, if you guys feel him, feel as helpful.
I enjoy having him here, I'd be satisfied if he wanted to come into the Zoom just so we could ask him questions.
Maybe if there's more technical things too, like, some of them are pretty straightforward.
So in other words, you support it, and Mr. Turner, okay.
Thank you.
Being on that, so can we have a motion in support of Mr. Turner?
So moved.
So I have a motion to support the presence of the building commissioner at the Zoning Board of Appeal meetings. Motion by Jim to grant or to approve, do I have a second on that?
Second down.
Second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye, Mr. Morrison?
Thank you.
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And myself, aye, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other discussions or comments?
We still have time to go get hot dogs over there, the Gaitman game's going on, so.
You're buying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very well, thank you, have a good night, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so that being said, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Jim, second, I have a second, anybody, second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, abstained, so carries 500, adjourned, thank you.